November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. Our indication tonight will be given by Reverend Ian Hatcher. Ian is the Associate Pastor at the First United Methodist Church here in Fayetteville. And our pledge tonight will be given by Amy Ray Young. Amy Ray is a sixth grader at Highland Run School. She's a member of the Student Council, the Beta Club. She's on the middle school dance team and she takes dance at the backstage performing arts. She attends Fayetteville First United Methodist Church and she's active with the youth group player. And her parents who are with us tonight are Waylon and Sarah McDillam. Would you please stand and remain standing for our indication and pledge?
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be with you all tonight. Let's go to God in prayer. O God of grace and mercy, you are righteous and holy, God. We look to you alone as a source of ultimate truth, wisdom, justice, and love. We're thankful for your constant presence in our lives and in this place. Lord, we are so grateful for our mayor, our elected officials, for their faithfulness and their willing to serve our county in this capacity. We ask your Holy Spirit to lead and guide them to be men and women of integrity. Help each one to make sound decisions for the good of our beloved community. Oh, we pray thy kingdom come and thy will be done in these important matters. Thank you, O God, for hearing our prayers and for responding. We are grateful. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, we pray.
The religion is through the flag of the United States of America and through the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Ian and thank you Amy Ray. At this time, if you will answer the roll call.
I have twenty-three commissioners present, one absent.
One absent, thank you. At this time, did all the commissioners get one of those handouts about the lights? No?
Yeah.
Okay. It's kind of self-explanatory, but this is this year's Leadership Lincoln project. They will be doing this at no cost to either the CDR, the county. And this would be best explained if you went online and looked at Law of Mississippi, what they do for their downtown area. These will be looped or swagged lights that will go around the outer loop in front of the buildings, the merchants, then the inner loop, and then swags coming across from the inner loop to what we call the widow's walk of the top of the courthouse. I think it's going to be a really nice project and really accentuate the beauty of our downtown and our courthouse lawn and buildings. Any questions on that? It's an information item only, but Dr. Hopkins, Dr. Bill Hopkins is the president of the Leadership Class this year. If you have questions, Bill, you want to add anything to that?
No, other than if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer those. We've already talked to the city about their part and we just think it looks beautiful. Added, you know, oak here on to the courthouse. We have some other news here also that I will do better job answering than I will. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Bill, and thank you, all the members of Leadership Lincoln. Thank you. The only other thing far as just an information type item is the state has allowed us and they've changed some of the things. And this far as new commissioner just goes back a ways on the Joe Biden Preserve at Wells Hill Park. We've had a grant for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to do paving or parking lots, putting some restrooms there. Well, when we got it built out, it was made and we could afford it, so we kind of put the thing on hold. And the state has come back and has allowed us to change the plans. Hopefully, it's going to come back in our budget. Then they've said we could apply for another grant to complete that project, which would be next year. So this is an information item. I just wanted to let you know that there are things going on there that maybe we'll get that done at some point in time and answer any questions if you might have about that. That's the only announcements. Animal control, we're still sending the monthly check and I have not received any complaints. So if there's anything that I need to know about y'all, call me. But otherwise, it seems to be working right now on our temporary arrangement with the Humane Society. Our next item, I would entertain a motion for approval of the October eighteenth Commission Meeting Minutes. Commissioner Bradford makes that motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Douglas makes a second. Any questions or comments?
I do have some. I think these could be changed in a minute.
Okay.
Under the category where it was approved for the additional money for planning and zoning for a vehicle, it states that it has with a unanimous voice vote that it's incorrect.
Okay.
I will go back and look at that and get it corrected.
Okay, do you remember what?
I will have it written down.
Okay, okay. Do you remember Commissioner Henry, come on up?
It was fourteen yes, six no, I believe.
I think that was...
Okay. Okay. Any other corrections? Thank you for that correction on it. I would entertain a vote then on that as corrected. All in favor of the minutes as written, but change that on far as the monies on the vehicle for planning and zoning. Please say aye. Any opposed, no? That was unanimously approved. Okay, our next thing is our monthly committee meetings. You should have received ten monthly committee meeting minutes in your packet. I would entertain a motion acknowledging receipt of those. Commissioner Taylor makes a motion. Commissioner Young seconds that. Any questions on any of those? All in favor of a receipt of those, please say aye. Any no's? Unanimously approved. Our next item, our attorney Ed Sims for consideration for approval of a resolution honoring the late Jimmy Pendergrass. Ed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This resolution is entitled Resolution Honoring the Memory of the Late Jimmy Pendergrass, Former County Executive of Lincoln County. Whereas on October nine, twenty twenty-two, the many friends and associates of Jimmy Pendergrass were saddened to learn of his death at age seventy-six. Whereas Jimmy Pendergrass was born on August twenty-nine, nineteen forty-six, in Fayetteville, Lincoln County, Tennessee, the son of the late Ernest Joseph Pendergrass Senior and Mary Nell Holcomb Pendergrass. Whereas Mr. Pendergrass served in the U.S. Army from nineteen sixty-six to nineteen sixty-nine during the Vietnam Conflict as part of the thirtieth Artillery Brigade, working with air defense weapons systems with his primary responsibilities being providing security protection for the Fifth Special Forces Group Southeast Asia, U.S. Third Marine Division, Pacific Army Command, and the U.S. Air Force reconnaissance air surveillance aircraft at Kadena Air Force Base in Okinawa, Japan. Whereas Mr. Pendergrass was a nineteen sixty-four graduate of Flintville High School, a graduate of Martin Methodist College, now UT Southern in Plaski, Tennessee, a nineteen seventy-four graduate of Middle Tennessee State University, earning a Bachelor of Science degree and taking graduate hours toward his master's degree, and attended the University of Alabama at Huntsville in nineteen seventy-four, Vanderbilt University in nineteen eighty-seven through eighty-eight, where he took courses in the U.S. Department of Justice in the U.S. Department of Justice on building correction facilities in the state of Tennessee and aerospace courses at Middle Tennessee State University from two thousand three to two thousand four. And whereas Mr. Pendergrass was a member of the First Baptist Church in Fayetteville, whereas Mr. Pendergrass was a member of the American Legion Post Number Forty-two for forty-eight continuous years, whereas Mr. Pendergrass taught in several Lincoln County schools, touching the lives of many students. Whereas Mr. Pendergrass served as a Lincoln County Circuit Court Clerk for twelve years. Whereas Mr. Pendergrass served with distinction as Lincoln County Executive from nineteen eighty-six to nineteen ninety and served on many boards, including Elk Regional Refuge Resource Authority from nineteen eighty-six to nineteen ninety, the Committee for Building Highway Sixty-four from Memphis from nineteen eighty-six to nineteen ninety, and the Lincoln County Education Committee to build the Montlo campus from nineteen eighty-eight to nineteen ninety. Whereas Mr. Pendergrass enjoyed working beside his family for many years at the family-owned Pendergrass Supply and Rental. Whereas Mr. Pendergrass was known to have a servant's heart. Whereas Mr. Pendergrass was married to Sarah Bledsoe Pendergrass for fifty years and they had two children, Michael Pendergrass, wife Donna, Melissa Burt, husband Lyndon, both of Fayetteville. Grandchildren Ava and Marie Pendergrass, Lola, Mary Grace Burt, Channing Leo Burt, goddaughter Madison Olivia Quick, brothers Joe Pendergrass, wife Marie, Jerry Pendergrass, wife Jane, brothers-in-law Jesse Bledsoe, Dr. Louis Bledsoe, wife Barbara, Tommy Bledsoe, wife Shirley, and Edward Bledsoe, wife Kay, and numerous nieces, nephews, and extended family members and friends. Now therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Lincoln County Legislative Body do hereby wish and desire to express to the family of Mr. Pendergrass our sincere condolences and sympathy and to express to them, as well as his many friends and associates, our sincere appreciation for the many years of devoted and distinguished service rendered to Lincoln County and this community by Mr. Pendergrass. And be it further resolved that this resolution of respect and esteem be spread upon the minutes of the Lincoln County Legislative Body and that a copy thereof be forwarded to his wife and children this the fifteenth day of November, twenty twenty-two. Signed, William R. Newman, County Mayor, Phyllis Council, County Clerk.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Bryant makes a motion. Commissioner Rollins seconds that. All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. If the family of Mr. Jimmy would please stand. Thank you, Sarah, and the rest of the family. The next item on there was done last month, so we're skipping down to committee updates. You should have received a sheet of updates on that. As far as the committees, Commissioner Walker has resigned from some that we will fill. And as noted on there, I've spoke with Commissioner Guin, Commissioner Mitchell, and Commissioner Bradford, who are one over and we'll take that up in our December meeting. And I think Commissioner Cunningham had mentioned that, and we checked back on far as the delinquent tax and financial committee, and that came in when Jerry Mansfield was the county mayor, county executive. And his intent, he said, when that came in was that for never to be two committees. It was to be one committee. So as I was corrected on that, that will be as one committee, the Delinquent Tax and Financial Management Committee. The next item on there, and this goes back for new commissioners. We, several months ago, it was brought up about old Lincoln Road speed limit. It was back and forth. We didn't do anything for a while. The TDOT has agreed if we want to study, they will do it at no cost and would pay for the initial signs. Now that's up to the commission. If we want to do anything about it, if we want them to do it, or if we just want to drop it, it's up to y'all. And if anybody needs background on it, there's probably people in here that can provide that.
They would do the study. The proposal was that the speed limit be dropped to forty-five. On a non-posted county road, it's fifty-five. So there's places where it's posted less than that in some of those curves. But we don't know what their study would learn about it. If we did do something about it, they studied it, it possibly could increase our liability. I don't know, but that's just, they would do it. They would do it at no cost. If we wanted to.
I called and talked to one of the TDOT engineers just to reiterate what you said, that they could say that if just one of us asked, that they would be studying it at no cost. And I talked to Mr. Gill and he provided some paperwork to me that showed that it wasn't in one of the three most dangerous roads in the county. The engineer also reiterated what came up on the initial meetings that y'all had, that, you know, he'd be looking at millions of dollars to go in and put a shoulder and do rightways and all that sort of stuff. So I don't think that that's been so long. But I do think since it is being one of the three most dangerous, that does have an incentive and they're giving some free signs. I don't see an issue. I know some people are concerned it'll become free for all and everybody will want their road. But again, if it is listed as one of the three most dangerous and obtaining the signs for free, that could be a situation except for ones that squash or something.
One that I'm not concerned with it is how are the law enforcement courts to enforce that when there is no shoulder? It's not a safe place to force someone out. How is it only being enforced? It's not a safe place for them to be out on the road.
Well, there was some controversy on that between Highway Patrol and the sheriff on that. And, you know, where there's a background on that, that is that was brought up. So it's, you know, it's the commission's call where we're getting with this. And that I asked for the study, got it, Commissioner Tyler.
I'll second.
Got it, Commissioner Guin. Seconds that. Any discussion? Tim, you want to address the commission?
Yes, I just wonder what type of the study they're going to do. Are they going to be an engineering study or a public domain study?
I don't know. I mean, there's a lot of different studies.
Yeah, I don't know. You know, Commissioner Rollins.
The engineer just said it would be to assess basically the speed limit. But he stated what you have brought up that, and reiterating what you said about you're not going to be able to do shoulder and that's going to be a lot of money and all of those issues, but it is one of the three most dangerous. As an educator, and I have lots of students in my class, I don't know. I need to slow down and so, and some adults just aren't going to. But I think if it's the will of the community and several have shown up and expressed that they want it done and it's not going to cost us anything and it can save a lot, then I think that would respond to the job.
What are the repercussions?
Right, I think. Commissioner Bryant, would you want to be recognized? Okay, Commissioner, no.
What are the repercussions of not doing the study? Since we have it available now, are there any repercussions of not doing that?
Of not doing the study and going ahead and reducing it?
No, no, just saying no to the study moving as is until the road is ready for the study to be done.
Well, you know as much about that as I do. I mean, you know, if you want, far as a legal, we could ask our attorney if you want a legal opinion on that far as if that we know what the road's like and we don't do anything about it. I don't know if it increases our liability or not. Ed, do you want to comment?
It seems like, it's been a long time and I didn't perform a file today, but one of the TDOT legal staff had never heard of a county being sued over a speed limit. So he thought it's kind of a non-issue, but anyway. I mean, I can't predict what could happen if there was a lawsuit filed. And I'm sure if we didn't follow the guidelines, that would be something that attorneys would bring up. So whether or not we get by on that or not, I don't know.
So if we do the study, we're probably obligated to follow through with that?
It would kind of sound like.
Yeah, okay.
I have two observations and I've said them one before. We all want everybody to drive safely, but hey, it will. Next month, there will be somebody who will go the road and wants their road done this way. And that's not to say we, I don't care what topic we're on. But then the other thing in my mind is, is every time we do this, that's fine if the commission goes to do it, that's perfectly fine. But we should also, to augment Mr. Gill's budget, because we have put one more job in his, just in his way to tell you the truth, because people are going to steal the signs and he's going to put them back up. And it's just going to happen. So, and I say, you know, it's fair to say, but I think that we will see everybody in the world that we've been on the road and not one other fan, that's safe, safe for us. Thank you, Chris.
That's right. Anyone else? Commissioner Action?
Well, Commissioner Rollins said, I think, certain guidelines. I mean, I would like to see all of our roads be safe and drive safely. But if it's the third most dangerous road and you're documenting that there's accidents after accidents on that particular road, if they got a road and they want theirs to do this just because they have, they don't want a lot of people driving fast and it's documented that it's the third most dangerous road, I would see that happening. But if it's in the top three, four, to me, that would be a thing to look at that we address. And I mean, that road has been, I don't know, I think one person said his mailbox may not be out five feet, huh? And I think that would do what, every road you're on, a lot of people are going to want it, but I think that would do what we do.
Anyone else? Commissioner Cunningham?
Speaking of mailboxes, mine on Gimlet Road has been hit six or seven times and I've got to the point where I spend no more than twenty-five dollars on any mailbox because I know it's not going to last a month. You know, what Mr. Bryant said is true. I mean, this is, talk about a can of worms. It's just going to be one road after the other. And everybody's road is just as important to them as old Lincoln Road. And they talked about old Lincoln Road. In order to really fix that, it's going to take millions. You need to broaden those shoulders and make it where a police officer can pull somebody over. We don't have enough police officers, be it state troopers, county deputies, whatever, to cover, to stop people for speeding. So, I mean, if you just got a sign up there, I'm not sure that that's going to do a lot of good. I was on the interstate today, driving sixty-five miles an hour and man, there were people coming around me, leaving me like I was sitting still. And sixty-five was the limit and I know a lot of them were going eighty, ninety. So I'm not sure that speed limits really help sometimes. But we've talked about this many times and I'm totally against it, so just by two cents worth.
Anyone else forward up?
I've already had somebody contact me on those roads. You just kind of check that. I plan to let you go through it. Do that. If that road is true, I would knock that. It would knock and break up the truck. But how it broke, I don't know. You should give it the lay of the burden or the price. If it's buying, then kicking. And if somebody's staying there with them, that's going to come off the act though. You know, it's going to come down with time. It's like you come by the interstate. Two, five, they want to play more tricks, you know, they say five, eight, and the interstate. That's the way I do it.
I think Commissioner Holt is next to him.
Mr. Gill, when y'all go to work on roads, is it the person that complains the most that gets their road worked on or is it the ones that have the most problems that get their attention?
I look at the condition and don't have.
So again, I think that takes us back to the top three that have the issues. People complain as much as they want, but they don't fall within those top three. And so that takes us back to that criteria that we can use as a safe harbor. It's, we all know people don't complain, so, you know, what can we do to help?
Okay, Commissioner, not the murder.
I remember when I took my driver's test at sixteen years of age. Never forget that state trooper that drove in the car. He said, Steve, that you are responsible. If you do not follow the laws of this state, you are responsible for any accident that you cause. You must be in control of your vehicle at all times, period. So if you want to be an idiot and get out here and drive seventy, eighty mile an hour on a curvy road and you have a wreck and kill somebody, it's not the county's fault. It's that person behind the wheel's fault. That's what that trooper totally did. So, there it is.
Mr. Douglas?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hear from Chief Bradford and see what, how it would burden the County Sheriff's Department.
Okay.
First off, I live at the beginning of the road. It's actually part of the city limits. And it's unbelievable how fast you can get going from the Huntsville Highway to my house. But as far as the Sheriff's Department's standpoint, we do not have the personnel to enforce it. We have generally three to four deputies to cover five hundred and eighty square miles. We have to take care of courts. We have to take care of schools. We have to take care of the general public. We have surf papers, arrest papers and civil papers. So we do not have, and then of course, we do also go to the accidents. So we are very familiar with the road, but there's no place on that road to safely, for an officer to safely stop a car. And if that car don't stop, then we take it as they're running, especially if they speed up and we have had pursuits up and down that road that are very dangerous. But I want one thing to be perfectly clear here. The Sheriff's Department does not have the staff. And you, if you go back and look at our call volume as far as accidents in Lincoln County, I can tell you it is the third most dangerous road in Lincoln County. But Lincoln County is in the top seven of, in the state of having crashes. And it's just not that road. The other thing that I want you to understand is, I understand Trooper Hill brought this before you several months ago and that's fine. I respect Trooper Hill. He's a friend of mine. He's a colleague of mine. But generally, we only have five to six troopers assigned to Lincoln County. And there are very long periods of time that there's not a trooper tonight in the county and we're sitting on a wreck for an hour and a half, waiting on a trooper to come from Murray County to work our wreck. So as far as enforcement, like Commissioner Young asked about, there's nothing to tell you but the truth. It's going to be very little because nobody has the time to go and just sit on that road and wait for us speeding. So THP don't have the resources to do it. Your Sheriff's Department don't have the resources to do it. And if we do try to do it, we're eventually going to have to come back and ask the county for more people.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and properly seconded to proceed with having TDOT do the study. So we'll electronically vote. A yes vote is to proceed and have the study done. A no vote is we're not going to do it. Uh, we have nine more.
We have seven yes, sixteen no, and one absent.
Okay, motion fails. Next item, consideration for approval to fill one slot of the Parks and Recreation Committee due to the resignation of Danny, Commissioner Danny Walker. That term would expire January twenty twenty-four. So the floor is open for nominations to fill a spot on Parks and Recreation.
Mr. Chairman, yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Rogers has been nominated. Okay, motion's been seconded. Now will make a motion that she be elected by acclamation?
So moved.
I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
So moved.
Commissioner Douglas makes a motion that Commissioner Rogers be elected by acclamation. Do I have a second? Second, Commiss- Commissioner Sprague. All in favor of electing Commissioner Rogers to that position, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Congratulations, Commissioner Rogers. Next item, consideration for approval to fill one of the slots of the Rules and Legislative Committee, uh, where Commissioner Walker resigned for that. The floor is now open for nominations to fill that slot on Rules and Legislative Committee. Commissioner Ewing?
I would nominate Marion Tackett.
Okay, Commissioner Tackett has been nominated. Commissioner Haynes, second that nomination of Commissioner Tackett. You want to make that a motion to elect by acclamation, Commissioner Ewing? Would you like to second that, Commissioner Haynes? We have a motion before the House of Acclamation, election of Commissioner Tackett. All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Congratulations, Commissioner Tackett. Next item, consideration to fill a slot on the zoning and appeal, the zoning appeals board, uh, that Commissioner Walker resigned. That term would expire January twenty twenty-six. The floor is now for nominations for that position.
I make a motion to put, uh, Daniel Rose Walter on.
Okay, Commissioner Frazren makes a motion, Commissioner, uh, Rose Walter for that. Commissioner Cunningham?
Well, I guess you need a second.
Okay, okay, got a second from Commissioner Haynes. Uh, Commissioner Cunningham?
I was thinking that was that committee that you appointed.
Maybe I'm wrong on that, but.
I saw, you're right about that. I, I can't suggest it, but I have not, so.
Okay, so you're letting the commission decide?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Frazren, would you like to make that acclamation motion and, uh, Commissioner Haynes, you second that? All in favor of electing, uh, Commissioner Rose by acclamation to that slot, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Elect by acclamation, Commissioner Rose Walter, congratulations. Our next item, uh, consideration for approval to appoint, uh, Daniel Eldridge, Commissioner Daniel Eldridge to the Lincoln County Planning Commission due to the resignation of Kay Brewer. That term expires May of twenty twenty-six. What's the will of commission on that item?
Most.
Commissioner Sprague makes a motion, uh, Commissioner Nick seconds that. Any questions, comments? All in favor of that approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Commissioner Eldridge. Uh, our next item, I believe we're down to Nancy Harris, Director of Planning and Zoning. If, um, have I missed anything about that? Okay, Ms. Nancy?
Okay, uh, so we had a public hearing earlier this evening. Uh, first on the agenda, um, this item came up for a public hearing with no comments. This is file number twenty twenty-two dash R nine. It is a rezoning request from Bank of Lincoln County to rezone from A-one Agriculture, Forestry, Rural Residential to C-one General Commercial. And this is for the purpose of an unmanned ATM. Uh, just, you have my staff report, so it kind of shows you the mapping and where this parcel lives.
What's the will of commission on this item?
So moved.
Commissioner Douglas makes a motion for approval, Commissioner Tiger seconds, any questions on this one? Okay, this electronic vote on this one, please. Well, you did last time on call for public hearings, so.
I will mark, I will mark those extensions.
Okay. Okay.
We have twenty yes.
Twenty yes?
Three extensions and one absent.
Okay. That motion passes. So you got the three extensions down. Walker Mitchell and Sanders, is that correct? Okay, all right, Ms. Nancy?
Next is file number twenty twenty-two dash R ten. This is also a rezoning request from A-one to C-one. Uh, this property is located on John Hunter Highway in Elora, uh, for John Speck. And this is just to, um, this has always been a commercial use, uh, and when the zoning map was adopted, for whatever reason, uh, A-one was applied to it. Uh, so Mr. Speck would like it to be what it should be, what the property's been used for, which is commercial.
Okay. What's the will of commission on this item?
Oh, sure.
Okay, can I check out the, make some motion, do I have a second? Commissioner Frazren, is that you? Mr. Frazren makes a motion. I think we can do just a voice vote on the rest of these. Uh, any questions on this item? All in favor of approval at rezoning, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Ms. Nancy, next item.
Next item is file number ZR twenty twenty-two dash five. This is a zoning resolution amendment request, uh, for Article seven, section seven point zero three zero E, and this deals with fees. Um, you should have a pretty detailed report, staff report, that, that pretty much explains this. This did come before the, um, in the public hearing earlier tonight and, uh, Commissioner Bryant did have some questions and concerns on the fees that we discussed.
Before I ask for a motion, does anybody want a question answered on that? I'd entertain a motion. Commissioner Bradford makes a motion for approval, I have a second. Commissioner Sanders seconds that. Any discussion? Commissioner Bryant, I recognize you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This stuff is small matter and I don't think we should settle it tonight either way, but, um, when we enacted zoning and planning back in the day, um, we set up a fee schedule much, uh, very similar. I think it's exactly what the city was charging at that time and I think it's probably been that way ever since. Uh, my only question and comment is that I don't, personally, I don't ever will see us make money in this area. Uh, our intent was, or my intent was to, you know, build houses, set up, consider rules to build by and follow those rules, uh, by the market. So I don't want to see this as a, a way to make money. So my question is, and what I think we should do, and this is just me, I think that during the budget process, this, you just picture, uh, season, we should address that and if our, if we're covering costs with the fees, and I don't think that citizens would have to pay extra just so we can make more money. Um, and, and I just want to thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? Okay. Let's, uh, Mark, is your working at all? It is back working now. Let's electronic vote on this. A yes vote would be to adopt the proposed fees that's in your document that you received. A no vote would, would be staying where we are now. Okay, if you will, please vote. Okay?
We have fourteen yes.
Okay.
Nine no, and one absent.
Okay. That, that amendment passes. Okay, next item, Ms. Nancy?
This is file number ZR twenty twenty-two dash six. This is also a zoning resolution amendment request. Um, what this does is concerns buffer strips, uh, where you have non-residential lands that are but residential lands. Uh, our current regulation requires that you have a buffer. Um, this doesn't change that, it just puts the definition of a buffer, uh, next to that requirement so you don't go searching for it. Uh, it's, it's just a housekeeping item. That and, um, the current resolution says, it specifically says A-one, A-two. Uh, so as we increase and then come up with additional residential zoning districts, each time we do that, we would have to amend this. So this just takes out the A-one, A-two and just says residential districts.
Okay, what's the will of commission on this item? Okay, Commissioner Eldridge makes a motion, Commissioner Taylor seconds. Any questions or comments? All in favor of approval of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved to public hearings.
Um, file number twenty twenty-two dash R seven. This is a rezoning request from A-one Agriculture, Forestry, Rural Residential to C-one, uh, which is General Commercial for Jack Daniels. This is located on Wall Bash Road in Mulberry. And this is to call for a public hearing at the December twentieth, um, county commission meeting.
Okay.
I do need to amend this if I can, and I'm not sure if this is the correct time to, um, the C-one is, is inappropriate.
Okay.
For the southern district, it should be I-one.
Okay, that's, that's, okay. Does, I don't see where it says in here which, what it's changing to, is it, um?
Uh, I'm giving my notes.
Oh, okay, all right.
But in my staff report, it says.
Okay, all right, so it would be, this is a public hearing for that. What's the will of commission on, uh, call for a public hearing?
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Sprague makes a motion, I have a second. Uh, Commissioner Dudley makes a second. All in favor of a call for public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved, next.
This is file number twenty twenty-two dash R eleven. This is a zoning designation request. This is a little bit different. Um, this property is located on Huntsville Highway in Simmons Circle within the urban growth boundary, dubbed UGB. Um, when zoning would, the zoning map was adopted in two thousand fourteen, there were several areas within the county that was not, that are within the UGB that was not given a zoning district. Um, it's, it's confusing because the UGB is not a zoning district, it is a growth plan. Um, so this request is to zone it C-one, which is General Commercial for future commercial development. And this is to call for a public hearing also for December twentieth.
Okay, good. What's the will of commission on this one, on call for public hearing?
So moved.
Commissioner Sprague makes a motion, Commissioner Taylor seconds. Any questions or comments on this? All in favor of call for public hearing, proceed.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, no? As unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, Ms. Cherie Jax, who is the item director for the library. We'll get the library to report.
Good evening. On behalf of our library director, Megan Murray, who is on maternity leave, it is my pleasure to bring you up to date about the exciting events happening at the library for the entire community to enjoy. The weather is just now beginning to cool off, but our library events continue to stay hot. The month of October saw one thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight patrons taking advantage of the library services. Our Korean Jewels Club meetings continue to be attended well. The club has over a hundred and eighty online followers as well as those who attend the meetings in person. In addition, our book club meets the last Thursday of the month. And this time, we were honored to host local author Kristen Howard to talk about her latest book offerings. Our STEAM club, which stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics, Tiny Tales Storytime, and the Lego Club continue to be very popular for teens and children. As always, our Halloween trucker treat was a success with almost four hundred and fifty costume children dropping by. November is also off to a fast start. In addition to our monthly club offerings, we are gearing up to celebrate both Thanksgiving and Christmas items. The library is hosting the Hands of Mercy Food Drive continuing through the nineteenth. Patrons may bring food items by the library to be delivered on November twenty-first to needy families. And who doesn't enjoy creating a unique costume for a doubly good, good time in our dress for turkey in disguise contest that ran from November seventh to the fourteenth? Of course, the library hosted events for the Host of Christmas Past for the young and the young at heart alike. It was very successful with over three hundred participants. We had games, arts and crafts, and even Santa Claus dropped by and posed for pictures. Also, the gingerbread man read his story to the children and provided them with gingerbread cookies and hot chocolate. It was difficult catching him to get his picture taken, but we managed to catch him in time for some photos. So at the faithful Lincoln County Public Library, we remain focused on being a center for celebrating and promoting literacy for all in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Jax? Thanks for filling in and all you're doing to hold everything together. That's an important job in our community, we appreciate it. Thank you. I think we're ready for the, uh, committee report. Commissioner Bryant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Committee of County Legislative Body of Lincoln County, conceived in November the first, two thousand forty-two, at six P.M. At Lincoln County Central County Library. All members present, with the exception of Commissioner Doug Cunningham, and he's back with us tonight. Good to see you, Doug. Uh, Vice Chairman Kate Ewing opened the meeting. Item one, county mayor. Clerk and master Rebecca Bartlett requested to provide fingerprinting services and one thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars for renovations that the TBI requires, and that would be downstairs. Commissioner Ewing, uh, recommended deferring. deferring any decisions until the law enforcement committee meets and gets the sheriff's approval for any renovations to the courthouse. Had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner King Caldwell, and passed seven yes and one absent to approve spending one thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars upon the sheriff's approval. Mayor Newman handed out the attached memorandum from Nancy Harris, planning and, uh, planning director regarding her upcoming retirement and Ms. Harris' recommendation for her office. Mayor Newman also informed the committee that the generator at the courthouse had been complete.
Okay. Uh, we have received the blessing of the sheriff on the changes that Ms. Bartlett wanted to do, so I would entertain a motion from the commission on that item.
Motion, you're first.
Okay. Commissioner Garthenberg makes a motion. Commissioner Rolls seconds. Any questions on this? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
Item two, finance director. Item A, Lincoln County Sheriff's surplus vehicles. Motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Hamburg, passed seven yes, one absent to approve Lincoln County Sheriff's surplus vehicles.
What's the will of commission on this item? Commissioner Ewing makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Bradford seconds. Any questions, comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
B, one oh one general fund budget amendments. We had a motion by Commissioner Sanders, seconded by Commissioner Hamburg, passed seven yes, one absent to approve the attached one oh one general fund budget amendments.
Okay. What's the will of commission on this item? Commissioner Taylor makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Douglas seconds. Any questions, comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
Item C, one twenty-seven, other general government special revenue. These are ARPA budget amendments, and they're attached. Motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Taylor, and passed seven yes, one absent to approve the attached one twenty-seven other general government special revenue ARPA budget amendments.
What's the will of commission on this item? Commissioner Taylor makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Mitchell seconds that. Any questions or comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
Item D, one forty-one general purpose school fund budget amendments. We had a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Hamburg, passed seven yes, one absent to approve the one forty-one general purpose school fund amendments.
What's the will of commission on this item? Commissioner, Commissioner Haynes makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Young seconds. Any questions, comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
Item E, financials. We had a motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Taylor, and passed seven yes, one absent to acknowledge the acceptance of the financials.
Entertain a motion, acknowledge the acceptance of those enclosures. Commissioner Taylor makes that motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Bradford seconds. Any questions on the financials? All in favor of acknowledging receipt of those, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Next item, notary publics. Madam clerk, thank Commissioner Bryant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Whitney Graham by Commissioner Sanders, Lisa Long, and Rebecca B. Kraft by Commissioner Rogers, William Cowan by Commissioner Young, Michelle Rutledge by Commissioner Douglas, Nicole Diaz, Lexie Boyette, James Waller, all by Commissioner Walter, Terrence Edward Huff, Jr., and Mercedes Nicole Clark by Commissioner Caldwell, Martin Mitchell by Commissioner Ashley, Michelle Ricks by Commissioner Frazarand.
Any other names needed added to the list? I'd entertain a motion of approval of those. Commissioner Bryant makes a motion. Commissioner Frazarand seconds that. Any questions? Mark, you could be safe. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Floor is now for new business.
Chairman, I would like to recognize Christie Long, please.
Okay. Motion to allow Christie Long to speak for her five minutes. Any objection? Ms. Long, you have five minutes.
Five minutes. Thank y'all so much for having us tonight. I do have a little show and tell. So I own eight twelve Lynchburg Highway. It's the old Marshall House. I have created that into a venue. And so I know you guys are thinking about having Jack Daniels come into our, into our community, but I also have a business there. I'm having people from all over the world come and visit Mulberry, Franklin County, Lincoln County, and Lynchburg. Let me state it. I am not against progress. I'm not against our county growing and doing things, and I'm not against Jack Daniels coming, but we need them to be a good neighbor. And by, by I mean a good neighbor, is that I have two barrel houses currently on my property, adjacent to my property. Two. They're gonna have their stake board going up. I'm gonna find out, I took, uh, it's a friend of mine that came in from Arizona this week, took one to work at Jack Daniels, that's the thing to do, let's figure that's good. I'm gonna find out the new barrel houses that are being proposed, haven't been planned yet, are gonna hold sixty-six thousand barrels of alcohol. Think about that. Times, you know, I know they have multiple plans they wanna do. How much black fungus is that gonna create for Lincoln County? It's just not for me. That's also for my, my neighbors. I have a, my neighbor's fifty, she has a, I think she's a one point five million dollar piece of property she has behind me. She goes through the same thing. Essentially what this does, it kills our plants. They come to my place because it's beautiful. They wanna get married there because it's beautiful. I can't fight beautiful with that. I need to know what the special sauce is to stop the damage. I'm asking you guys, when you start looking at this stuff, put in restrictions. Have some accountability. I have been told off the record that I need to choose my battles. When I went into business for myself, that is my battle. Because I mean, I need to make my business grow, and this is gonna prevent me from making my business grow, because nobody wants to get married in Jurassic Park. And I'm talking about that. I've also been told for the greater good. Well, for the greater good of who? So our schools can grow a little bit differently, or we can maybe build a football, a football stadium, maybe put in new lights. Aren't, can we not bring in better businesses to do that and not destroy other people's properties? It's not just mine. There's thousands of acres we're talking about here. And again, I'm not against Jack Daniels. Love Donna. I love the whole crew. I know them personally. But they are a thirty billion dollar company. We need to have air filtration systems. We need to have accountability for how many trees we're gonna plant. And it's also been said that plants don't grow. Well, let's make them grow. So let's put in a filtration system where they can actually grow. All the things. The only way it's gonna be done is starting right here by y'all. Y'all are the ones that get to make the decision. Not me. And I thank you for the voice tonight. Thank you for doing what you're doing. But understand, we're just trying to make a living, and I appreciate the time and y'all's effort to understand what we're trying to do.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to acknowledge Patrick Long for what he's saying.
Okay. All righty. Any objections? Patrick Long's picking. Okay. Patrick, you have your five minutes.
Okay. I appreciate y'all giving the opportunity to talk to y'all, and I really appreciate y'all, except for the time that you're giving these guys. It's our new Lomond. It's been an amazing career since I've been here. So hopefully make that long time. So coming from the Army, I'm all about regulations, right? So I'm going to draw it all with nothing but TCA, Tennessee Code, you have to take your own plan, your own emissions, regulations. And I think that this, this body has actually reported it over the past ten, fifteen years, right? Uh, I'm gonna start with some numbers. These numbers are interesting. A lot of places were stolen from it. Brown Foreman's worth thirty-two billion dollars. Back goes up and down every day with stock, right? And bourbon's good now. It's going up. So they're making plenty of cash, right? I could do lots of that. I made the jacket of this in my time, so I'm helping that. Last twenty twenty-one, Brown Foreman made eight hundred and thirty-two million dollars in the net profit. That's not, not, and I gotta take some cost of goods up, net profit, eight hundred and thirty-two million. Last year, Lincoln County had, got nine million dollars received in property taxes in twenty twenty-one. That's what y'all got from existing, all the property taxes you collect today. You got a hundred and twenty-three thousand in the audit that people hadn't paid. Good luck with that. Jack Daniels today plays a hundred and twenty-six thousand in taxes for the three properties that they own. That includes the three barrel houses that already exist. That is approximately one point six percent of the total property taxes that you take in today. That's not exactly huge yet. When they're completed with the three barrel houses that they're working today, that doubles to a whole three percent. Make it three point two. So you're bringing in about three hundred K. What we're saying is, is it worth three hundred thousand dollars to deal with and to be the first time that you actually allow that company to come into Lincoln County? Because once you issue a permit, which you haven't done, and I'll get to that in a second, that's a big deal. And I'll talk about that. But here's the biggest number. Zero. Lots of times, the smallest number is always the most effective. Zero times of this body has ever voted to approve a single thing, it can end up how they did it. Zero. You never give them a proof of permit. You don't have a building plan on the site that's been approved. You don't have a site plan. You haven't charged them the three hundred thousand dollars in permit fees that you should have paid for the construction of the six warehouses that are currently built and being built today. That means it's not legal. So now let's jump into the really exciting, new shit that I'm gonna bore you with, right? So what does that mean? The biggest thing I found when I started this little endeavor a few months ago is that they're grandfather. Well, they're not. So in twenty twenty, you guys, this body brought in a man named Sam Edwards. Sam's an attorney planning zoning. And he explained to y'all, to this body, uh, what the rules were. And number one, well, this is Sam's opinion he just gave me today. Under Tennessee Code annotated one thirty-seven, thirteen seventy-two eight, there must be a use of the property that was allowed under prior zoning, or when no zoning was by little use. Therefore, buying the property but not constructing the building does not establish it as a use that's grandfathered. They built the building after planning the code's start. Therefore, they are not grandfathered. There was no use of the farm. Trust me, they're not the farm. Lynchburg Highway has its time. So let's go through a couple zoning issues real quick. I got two minutes. The Lynchburg Highway Barrel Houses, no permit, has been issued, no site plan, and they're illegal. At this point, according to Tennessee Code and according to your own Lincoln County zoning regulations, as you can see in the documents that I sent you, they're not allowed to be building anything, right? A direct violation of Tennessee Code. What does that mean? It means a stop work order must be issued. Now, Tennessee Code says, in any case, any building or structure is proposed to be erected, constructed, blah, 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 gets a good stuff. You can read it that I sent you. Or to correct such violation, or to prevent the occupancy of building, structure, or land, the building commissioner, Charles Municipal Council, and, or any other appropriate authority of the municipality or an adjacent neighboring property owner who could be damaged by violation, may institute injunction, mandamus, or other appropriate action pursuant to prevent such unlawful behavior. You have to do something. You have structure being built illegally in this county that this body has never approved. And Nancy has even reminded me that it's not even property though. The one time you actually voted, you voted, this is not commercial. Commercial is strictly for, has its ways, it has a three-story limit on the height. So here's what I'm asking. We'll quit some about our time. I'd love for y'all to consider tonight a proposal to vote to issue a stop work order today for Jack Daniels and Lynchburg Highway to stop construction. I'd also like you to consider asking for, uh, that all Jack Daniels, consider the open hearings that are coming up, consider air filtration. It takes a hundred and fifty grand for a building to be saved. They make eight hundred and thirty-two million. We're asking, here, this is extremely important. Hey, I appreciate it. I gotta stop. You give it thirty seconds? Thirty seconds. I appreciate that. Big point. So Kentucky's had this battle with them for about fifteen years, right? The Kentucky Supreme Court just ruled about four years ago, and they said, hey, years of you. When the county gave them the permit, it's over. Meaning, EPA has, and they'll tell you, well, EPA except you could do it. That's true. EPA and Clean Air Act specifically states that if the, if it's in the best interest of an act, which keeping poor plants from, and others from being black, could be considered that, then until you give them the permit, which you have not done, that's the good news. You can put restriction on it. Just like you don't see ugly Walmarts in Destin, Florida, because nobody wants an ugly Walmart in downtown Destin. You can say, Jack Daniels, we love you. I want your money. I love your alcohol. Man, can't y'all just look into those? We're gonna require you to put a filtration system in each of those barrel houses. Call it the new green version of Jack Daniels whiskey. You like Coley Hill, right? Something to that effect. But if they're gonna come be part of the family here, thank you, Mayor for that. Right now, we feel like, I think that's not being a problem. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. Can you, I need a commissioner to, is there a commissioner that, that you asked of?
I have none. Sorry, I did not help.
Okay. Commissioner Sanders.
Yes. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Sanders. Lewis.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Donna Lewis. I am the Director of Technical Services, Main Insular Barrel Distribution for Jack Daniels. Um, there has been a lot of information going around that, quite frankly, is incorrect, and I would like to take a minute to clear the air on that one. So we are here seeking the rezoning of the ninety-three point four acres for six additional barrel warehouses in Lincoln County. And so when you look at, for us, the reason we're coming to this area is that it finishes the barrel construction on the left-hand side of the corridor, um, for the property that we currently own today. It is also in the middle of existing warehouses and, um, you give it the wall bash road side. So for us, it really finishes that corridor of warehousing construction, and then we, as we continue to grow, will move to additional property. We are not looking to rezone our property on Louse Creek. Um, I think that has been out there, um, in the media, and that is not true. Um, when we think about Jack, Jack employs somewhere between seven hundred and thirty and a thousand people. Nineteen percent of those come from Lincoln County. And that does not even include the contractors that we utilize to support our business and our growth. Um, the whiskey warehouses are not hazardous. If you think about a bottle of whiskey when you see it, a hazardous material is defined by the concentration of the alcohol in the, in the container and the volume. So although in large quantities or in higher produce, it could be considered hazardous in our current use, that is not the case. Um, in terms of the microflora, which is what we call it, um, it can be found in many different areas. It's not just found around whiskey warehouses. It's found around bakeries. It can be found in coastal areas. It is driven by temperature, humidity, uh, wind can be a factor. So although it can be seen in our area, it's not necessarily the only reason it could be in the environment. There have been internal, external, and scientific studies that show that it is not hazardous to humans, and it also does not damage property. Could it be a nuisance? Yeah, sure. And it can easily be remedied by having it washed off. Um, we have been asked to look at washing people's properties. That was part of the cleaning, uh, committees asked to us. We do not feel comfortable taking on the personal property management for people's houses. And so we have not, as a company, and will not, plan to clean people's houses. We feel like that is their responsibility, although it could be affected by our operation in the area. We cannot take on that personal responsibility and liability, especially in the event something were to happen. Um, and then around the questions on zoning, is my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we did go through the planning commission on the initial current property, um, and it did come to a public hearing and to a vote to allow us to build. Um, I had gone back and tried to look through the records for us, um, although I cannot find where a permit was pulled. Our understanding was it was part of that zoning. So if we need to go back and So if we need to go back and pay those permits, we have no problems with that. Um, we also have submitted plans for the warehouse. I believe that was given to Ms. Nancy to give to the fire department. Um, and we did go through an initial inspection on that first warehouse, where the building inspector actually told one of the employees that Jack Daniels, that was responsible for the property, "Hey, you're good. I don't need to come inspect these anymore." So we have not had substantial inspections for the other four additional warehouses. Um, in terms of the build of the warehouse, we are held to DISCAS standards. And DISCAS is the Distilled Spirits Council for the United States. Those standards are typically more stringent than you would see in the, um, IBC codes, specifically twenty-eighteen, which is what we're currently building too. So we are held to a little bit higher standard for that, from a fire suppression, from a containment perspective, from fire monitoring, and from vapor monitoring. And in addition to that, Jack Daniels has its own internal fire department, who are specifically trained in the event, if there were ever a fire, that we have a firefighting phone and the ability to respond quickly to be able to get it under, um, under containment and maintenance. So please know that we're taking all of the precautions that we really need to take, and we want to come to Lincoln County. We want to continue to grow and expand our business because a big part of this counting is how we're able to produce the way that we do today. And so although, because of the three initial buildings, there was a, what I would say, a break in between that and the two.
Thirty seconds.
Yep, thirty seconds. Although we're only contributing roughly a little less than two-hundred thousand today, when the full fourteen warehouses are built, the eight on the initial and the six that we're asking for, it will contribute around a million dollars in property taxes to the county annually. Thank you for your time, I really appreciate that. I just wanted to, yep, thank you. You know, I should have addressed that, and I'm sorry. So our warehouse, our warehouses are considered to have a fugitive emission. And by fugitive, what that means is the EPA considers that to be emissions that could not reasonably pass through a stack, a chimney, event, which means they can't be captured. Um, and so there are fugitive emissions that are permitted. And although there have been some studies to look at, can you filter it? There is no, for us, it will negatively impact the maturation of the whiskey and the overall product quality. And so although Mr. Wong has stated a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, I can tell you our warehouses, property taxes alone have increased because the build has increased. I don't, I don't see that that's a true valid number. What I can tell you is based on all of the research that we've done, it will impact the maturation of our whiskey, so we do not have a way to capture and filter it. We have it on our property. Um, and what I can tell you is it can be rinsed off by water. It does not damage the plants or kill the plants. I will also say, we've lost a number of trees this summer out of Jack Daniels' property, mostly due to the drought. And so if you look at some of the warehouses, we do have dead trees. But we're working with local, like landscapers and people to understand what is the most drought-resistant evergreen we can put in that area so that we can make sure that we continue to be consistent with it.
I don't have a problem with you having on your property. But I have probably can't, you get on your property.
And I completely understand, but given the emissions, like, we don't have a way to capture them.
Well, then y'all should put in an air filtration system or do something. I personally live down there, and it's on my property, and somebody's gonna hear from me. They're gonna get a good long hearing, too.
So, and, so I have been in the state of Tennessee about two years. I came from Kentucky, and I've been with Jack Daniels, or Brown and Ground Forman, probably about eighteen years now. I grew up in Barstown, which is the bourbon capital of Kentucky. I can tell you that my husband and I personally washed our house annually. We took care of our plants. We did what we needed to do because it was in the surrounding area. So I understand where you guys are coming from, I do. But I also can tell you that it does not damage the property and it does not damage the trees.
Well, if y'all didn't take the big kids who wash in your house, they're not legal.
We are not. Like, for us, we will not right now take on that responsibility because what if we wash in somebody's house and something happens?
I don't say that.
Then we're responsible for us.
It does take somebody else washing, especially reverse that you.
Okay. I, I think the next person that I saw was Commissioner Cunningham.
I, I had a question about, uh, of course, for those people that have never been out there, and that's part of my district, so I'm very familiar with it, but there are several warehouses there on the Moore County side. How many are on the Moore County side, just right across the Lincoln County line?
Um, we have about twenty houses right there.
So there's, because you can't see all the way back in there.
You have some on the right side of the road, and then we had quite a few on the left-hand side of the road. So there's twenty right there in Moore County.
So if Lincoln County hadn't, if there hadn't been any put in Lincoln County, there'd still be twenty?
There absolutely would be.
Right there on the Moore County side that we couldn't do anything about?
Right.
Okay.
May I mention some internal studies about the act of sex and this world, the air filtration system? Is that something that you can share with this body?
So, um, I don't have it with me. What I can tell you is there have been some studies outside of our company, like scientifically, to look if they can, um, actually filter that. I don't have that information. I can try to get it for you. I know that, um, the KDA did a ton of work in this space.
Mr. Wong.
Can you confirm the amount of barrels that you have in the barrel houses in Moore County? And how many barrels are going to be stored in those areas?
So if I can grab my calculator, I can give you a directional, is that okay?
Sorry, I'll look my phone over here. So are you talking about just on the property line, kind of in that area?
Okay. So this number's a little high because of the twenty warehouses, none of them have, oh, hold on, let me see. Roughly one-point-two million are on that area right there in Moore County, across those twenty houses. That's where I've estimated changes as we are entering whiskey and taking it out. And of the barrels that are going to be stored on the paint property, it was zoned for eight warehouses. They're going five-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand. And we're looking for an additional roughly four-hundred thousand on the ninety-four acres that were asking for zone before. So we put it about nine-hundred thousand in last one time.
I, I'm just really funny. As an educator, I really try to do my research. I've been initiated with trying to figure some stuff out on my own, and the information that's very thorough that was being sent out, and that recording that you shared out, it's very helpful as well. Um, from legal standpoint, if I send an email, I didn't get a response. Is there any way that we can have some outside counsel come in and speak to us about the process and how this is all being handled and how we move forward with, I don't know how to make any difference, but I'm just really concerned about that. I don't know if anybody has similar concerns to everything that was shared. Did we follow the rules right, Jack Daniels? Did we follow protocol and control? I mean, this is out of my wheelhouse.
No, it's not, Jeff. Uh, I have authorized Ed to get outside counsel to get, to advise us because he nor I know, you know, legal ramifications of, of some of this. So, uh, we, we do have, uh, we don't have yet, but we are asking, uh, for outside counsel.
I'm really glad that we're, that we're going to, that's what the law process. And I stated at the last meeting that we, we were about, you know, the Lincoln County process and the history. I mean, I think it's genius marketing. I think that that opens the door for Jack Daniels to tell a new story that's different than the one that we've told forever. I'm excited about the kinship, relationships that we have in Moore County. But in Lincoln County, we're known for taking care of our neighbors and taking care of each other. And at one of the meetings, we had some elderly people, and they're asking, "How's this going to look like from our property? Why do you guys want to clean it?" And, and our community, we take care of people like that. And I don't know, you know, one of my questions is, you're saying that y'all would knock in the back and retroactively pay whatever those permits were originally? Could we, and again, this is a question we may not eventually, could we put that into an account? And when they bring us, "Hey, I had my home cleaned, here's the money." I just want to take care of our neighbors and welcome you into the family. But I want to make sure that people are taken care of, you know? Property is great, but I'm not willing to do it stumping on people's backs to get there. That's not real progress. If the drought hurry, and they look, and they see what all the houses look like around there, and say, "That's great, we got that money." You know, those houses look hard. You know?
And I, I hear you. One of the things that was brought up at the planning meeting was, can you pay a portion of those annualized taxes to help support that? You know, I mean, that, for us, it's money we pay to the county, and then the county can determine what to do, you know? And that, for us, is not something that we're gonna advise on, but you all can determine what to do with those properties.
I think that's something that we, as a commission, should get. If you are willing to retroactively pay that, and you can put that into a mechanical, you can try and figure out a people. That's something that we should get. I've just got lots of questions, and I'm glad that we are receiving them, so I can feel proud of them.
Yeah, and the question I had, so the zoning amendment is gonna be the I-one, which I think is what I personally called for, right? Okay. I just wanted to make sure my records look right. Thank you.
Anybody else? Commissioner Wong?
John, um, I was asked by Mr. Eldridge, can you provide proof of the air filtration that, uh, will not supposedly work in, in the barrel houses? And also, we've heard lots of what you can't do for our neighbors. I don't know what can you do to prevent this from happening to your, your homes, your cars, our roads signs? Are you gonna take care of that? It's an agricultural community, and this is not supposed to be for vegetation at all. I don't know what can you do?
So you all have probably seen, there are some things that we are doing. So we keep a minimum of about a hundred-and-fifty feet of all property lines. We have partnered with UT for, it'll be twenty-five years next year on reforestation. So we are planting trees along some of these areas. We're gonna do more kind of on the Moore County side where we can't build. So we're looking at adding more trees and vegetation to help in the area to give barriers, to give borders. So. It should help. We're gonna continue to add more trees along that corridor. And where Wabash is, is really surrounded, with the exception of probably one, one, maybe two properties, is surrounded by vegetation.
Can you go on that tree?
I can, so I will, so what I will tell you is, I don't have that in hand. I know that that has been researched, and I know that we do not plan to install it because it will negatively impact the maturation of our whiskey. And for us, that's the, that's the quality. That's what makes Jack Daniels, that the barrel is very important in that process. Otherwise, we wouldn't choose to age it for four years before we can, four years before we pull it out into a bottle.
But you know that, so next one.
So I will go and try to find that information and give it to you all. I was not around in, at Jack when I think that originally came up. I do know I was in Mobile, but in a different area. And from my understanding, we have not deployed that in any of our warehousing locations, probably because of lack of effectiveness, so.
You just seem like a very similar solution to what we're, relative in many instances, compared to all of the numbers we're talking about. That, that would seem like a very unique solution.
Right, but it's a fugitive emission. So for us, there's not a way to capture all of the air inside of that warehouse, right? So that's part of the reason it is for us a fugitive emission because we really don't want to lose anything out of barrels, right? When we lose some of the vapors, we lose some of the alcohol that's aging inside of the barrel. So that's why, for me, it was important to talk about, you know, a fugitive emission is something that cannot reasonably pass through a stack, event, a chimney, a column, so that you can clean it up. It's not something that is captured. So I will take it back. I will advise our team. I know we've had the conversation about cleaning warehouses many times. Um, and, and so recently, you know, some of the other questions had not come up. And so I will take it back to the team, and, you know, we can, I guess, discuss further at the public hearing.
Anybody else with questions? Thank you. Want you to adjourn a little? Whoa, whoa, whoa! Okay, it's a privilege, Jack. You can turn voting down, but there's motion, is there a second? That's for last second, okay? I saw Commissioner Fred Fran move.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak. Uh, some of the things that Mr. Wong spoke about are, are incorrect. Uh, when the county, I was first building inspectors with this county, county hired. We do have a second here now. My office has never received construction plans, building plans, from Jack Daniels as of today. Uh, and I have never completed any type of inspection on any building on their side in this county. Furthermore, she said that they are meeting the two-thousand-and-eighteen resident of International Building Code. I cannot say for sure they are or aren't. Without plans, I don't know. But I have been told they're building an eighty-plus-thousand-square-foot building. That will not meet the code in Lincoln County unless they're building to a type. I think it's aisle one, which is fire rated, that sort of stuff. My understanding, they're H-three occupancy, building to a top-two B construction. That holds them to a sixty-thousand-square-foot building or less to meet the code in this county and this legislative body passed. Now, if they're building an eighty-plus-thousand-square-foot building, that can't meet the code unless they're building to a higher standard than what they have told me in a previous meeting that they were building it to. But I don't know, we've never seen plans or been asked to issue a building permit. I just kind of want to state that for the record. Does anybody have questions for me?
Um, I have a question for you, for your twenty fans. Is this legal? What are your names? Are we, are we labeled this one?
I'm not sure of this, I'm not involved in this, I have no idea. I think we're doing it, we're talking about. I don't know. I really don't know of, uh, as far as building size and type of construction, no. That's my special, and I can go that far. Who would know if we're, if they were going to label it, label it or not? Who would know? Have a attorney, someone that specializes in planning his own. An engineer, they could have an engineer that come out and do it, wash it up. And I have no idea as to what's happened on the clock. Evidence of that.
Okay, any questions from the commission person, then I'll recognize Mr. Wong, uh, because he allowed Jack Daniels representative to have questions. Do you want? Okay.
What are options at this point? Would they give us some of those sets? What are our options?
I, I will interject. The reason we get outside counsel of this is, this is not out of order, what all is happening tonight because of you business, you know, we're doing this. But, um, I think far as even action on this commission would be, um, out of order far as, uh, the things that we have. We do have an attorney. We do have an attorney. He told you he doesn't know. I don't know. So, we need to find out what our legal options are, and then make a decision based on facts and realities on this. But I will, Mr. Lowes, if you want to say something outside of the ballot.
Well, black is a big deal. I'm really here about public accounting. So, I'll just reiterate, Tennessee building, this is the law, it's a bit of a rule about Tennessee building. Y'all will find it. I got it quoted by paragraph of the state. I'll go slow this time. In any case, any building or structure is or is proposed to be erected, constructed, reconstructed, altered, converted, or maintained, or any building, structure, or land is or is proposed to be used in violation of any ordinance, which Charles just said it is, enacted under this part and Part Three of this chapter, the building commissioner, you know, municipal council, or other appropriate authority of the municipality of all or any adjacent or neighboring property owner, E, R, S, D, other partners around us, who would be substantially damaged by such violation, may, in addition to other remedies, institute, this is what you can do, injunction, mandamus, or other appropriate action or proceeding to prevent such unlawful erection, construction, reconstruction, alteration, conversion, maintenance, or use, or to correct or abate such violation, or to prevent the occupancy of the building, structure, or land. Last one, just to reiterate, as we're asking, we want to know the legal... This is it. This is y'all's. This is what you approved. So, Lincoln County, when you approved zoning regulations, y'all all voted. Nancy applies, Charles applies, and they do a great job. And the very first one, this is the law of Lincoln County, okay? This is Lincoln County Zoning Resolution 7.030, Paragraph A. It shall be unlawful to commence the excavation, which is what we're doing today, or deconstruction of any building or other structure, including accessory structures, to commence the moving alteration or repair of any structure, to use a building or structure, or to change the use of a building or structure, or to commence the filling of land even, without a permit issued by the building commissioner. Here.
Okay. I recognize Commissioner's right.
Just have a question. Did you all get home? Uh, what year did you all purchase the property?
We purchased the property in last year, between twenty...
Thanks, sir.
Can I ask that quickly?
Wait, how? We don't have to cut off discussion. I mean, this is, this is not something where no act don't deny. I guess everybody knows that. So, uh, I, we are going to be second, getting outside counsel on this. So, anything we discuss is fine tonight, but we're not, we're not going to be taking any action tonight on anything.
Mr. Chairman, I just want the commission to be aware of that she stated that I have made inspections on all the buildings.
I understand that, okay. Commissioner, tell it again.
I do actually have a motion, Mr. Chairman. It is something that I've been talking about. I have concerns, and concerns about this county commission's liability. But I like to make this motion, and it's long, and I've got it written down, Madam Clerk. But I move that the situation involving Brown Foreman, Jack Daniel, and the warehouses that have been built in the past, and being built now, and those that might possibly be built in the future, move that this situation be referred to the Budget Committee, where we could set up a subcommittee appointed by the Budget Chairman to hire an attorney with expertise in planning and zoning. Said attorney would not have any previous relationships with Lincoln County, and would report back to the Budget Committee, and, which of course would report to the full commission. This attorney would be hired to access, assess our current situation and provide legal advice and options on a way forward for Lincoln County and its citizens. And these, any attorney expenses would come out of line 101-51400-399. You know, I really think that, you know, this county commission needs to control the attorney that we're giving. So, make that motion.
Motion been made last second. Can you prove your second's? Commissioner Hayes? Yeah, it's a, it's a discussable motion.
And that's, that's hard to do?
Well, and I don't know, if you want to address this, because we have spoke to a law firm. We have not spoke with an attorney about help on this.
I spoke briefly with an attorney. I, you know, we're in, I said I haven't called you. We're not hiring, we're not hiring attorneys, you know? I thought, how do you mean basement letter? And I'm relieved that you can get another attorney. I have no expertise in zoning, no experience in zoning, and I've covered the hell. So, anyway, just how do we get some extra expertise that's great as far as I'm concerned?
Can I ask a quick question?
I hope I can answer. I doubt, but I'm glad to hear your question.
We're playing in a zone since it's such an important department and affects so many things. Do you think that we could, for example, want to advise them throughout the year, leave grounds of containment if they have to?
We've done that several times, to get outside counsel for zoning matters. Because I do not have the expertise.
Would it be beneficial to have someone that we are just for that?
Well, sure, that'd be great. Someone that's really good in that area, and I'm ready to, you know, you need them, you call them, and they can give you an answer. I think the school board has someone very similar to this. If they call, he's a school board attorney, he's got, he follows this type of law, he's a good egg, he probably doesn't do anything else. Anyway, I would, I think that'd be a great idea.
Well, we have a motion out there that the Budget Committee hired an attorney. And we've had open for discussion. Any other? Let me see if there's any other discussion. I'll come back to you.
Because the Budget Committee and the White Committee should be planning the zoning, should be doing the several reports.
Well, what we're talking about now is hiring an attorney. The motion is that the Budget Committee offers the chairman and the Budget Committee would hire that attorney.
Yeah, I mean, of course, Mr. Hayes brought up that, you know, he'd like for everybody to be there. Well, Budget Committee, I mean, it's an open meeting, you know, everybody can come there and see. But you gotta, committee system works, you know, for a reason. You find out information, and then you pass it along. Uh, there's really not a good committee for this, and I've thought about it all weekend, you know? You go to ethics, do you go to rules of legislative, do you, you know, what do you do with it? And it's, you know, you're buying legal fees, you're spending legal fees, and we're talking about fees that we may have missed out on, and, you know, certainly that's a money conscious place. But I don't know that there is a good committee. But what I do know is that we need an attorney, and I would like somebody, you know, to give us some advice. And that's the only way I know to do it, is to get it in a committee and have that attorney chosen, and get somebody in there. And let's find out what our situation is. We may be in great shape, but then again, we may not. So, let's find out.
In other areas, I can tell you what we've done. We've relied on Ed Sims and his ability to pick out that. Because we have, we have an HR attorney in Nashville that he corresponds with on all HR matters. Our interlocal solid race has an attorney in Chattanooga. So, it's, it's one of y'all to do. But I trust Ed Sims to make a good decision on hiring an attorney.
Chairman, I'd just like to mention one thing. I'm like Doug, I don't know if there's any good meeting. But I will say the Budget Committee has been represented from each of this. So, it would be, each speaker would be represented on that Budget Committee, making connections. Of course, you're on there, that, remember, may not only be here there, too, not to be involved. We would be able to sit down in every...
Commissioner Young?
Um, I feel like if we're going to hire an attorney who is going to advise us in planning and zoning, that this should go their way to their convenience. So, they can be educated on what goes on from that attorney's standpoint, they can be advised. And that's, it's really had nothing to do with the Budget Committee, other than funding. Budget Committee is funding. Planning and zoning is what we're discussing, and I feel like it should go their way. And that way, they're being educated as well, as to what's best for our county.
Commissioner Hayes says, and the next, you still?
I agree with you. Okay.
Commissioner Lowes?
All the questions that I asked at the last meeting and zoning meeting, I was basically told that everything I have to do to be asked here on this floor, if they could give anything, we would all power to do it. I'm more in favor of me and the Budget Committee getting all...
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion, less vote, electronically. A yes vote is for the Budget to investigate and hire.
Is it possible that the Bureau could amend that? If Ed Sims chooses lawyer?
No, that's, I mean, you can try. I mean, you certainly amend anything. I wouldn't be in favor of that amendment.
Okay. We got a motion, probably second, on the floor. A yes vote is Budget to investigate and hire longer, a no vote is we're not, the Budget's not. And make any kind of motion, you want. Ready to vote. Madam Clerk?
Sixteen, yes. Seven, no.
Okay. Okay. The motion passes, so you'll get a copy to the clerk for making that a part of our...
Yes, sir.
Okay? Any other new business?
I should have been able to do it.
I should, so it'll take a second. This is a voting vote, so I have a motion and a second. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Any opposed, vote. We're adjourned. We're adjourned.